All right, that was kind of a weak gavel, but it's six P M. And I'll call the city council, city manager work session meeting to order. We're going to be doing city charter review. City manager Smith?
Yes, uh, councillors, um, it's a little bit of a light crew tonight, but I'm glad to see everybody here. It's been an extra week since we saw you last, so, uh, we'll jump right in. So, um, what's the charter? My best definition or explanation is that it's like the constitution for the city. So, you know, like the, for the country, the voters put together, there was a constitution put together, voters approve, it lays out the form of government, elections, various other items. Same kind of thing for the city. The city voters approve the charter and it lays out how we operate as a government. So, in Oregon, we have something called municipal home rule. So, as long as state law doesn't strictly prohibit us from doing something, we're allowed to do it under a charter, um, like we have. So, I, I like this quote as I was, uh, kind of reviewing of a number of, uh, documents. The journey of a local government is one fraught with challenges and achievements, successes and failures, risks and rewards. One of the most interesting things about local governments is the flexibility they have in forging their own paths. Within some constraints set by state law, municipal governments create their own futures through the decisions made by citizens and local elected officials. One important way that a local government controls its own destiny is through its charter. So, um, it's, it's an important document, governs a lot of things that, how we do, how we do our business. So, our charter was originally adopted on March fifteenth of nineteen ten, and then it's been modified, amended a number of times. You can see a number of dates there. Those aren't in order, but, um, early on, it looks like there was a requirement, anytime the city issued debt, it had to go into the charter. So, some of those were issuing bonds to pay for water lines in the forties and fifties, um, just different things. Then, um, in, uh, in two thousand fifteen, the city council went through a more detailed look at, at the charter, and that's where the current charter we have, uh, that was when it was put in front of the voters and approved. And so, it's now been ten years since, since that was adopted. So, why should we, why should we review the charter? So, there are a number of different reasons. Um, one is sometimes there's a change in state law, there's a change in the state constitution that changes something that's in the charter. Um, the things that we do gets, get more complex. Uh, sometimes charters are adjusted to make adjustments to how the citizens are represented. So, a number of charters might, uh, at a certain time period went from kind of at-large elections to more wards, things like that. Uh, some want to change the structure of the government. So, uh, Beaverton went from a, uh, they went from a strong mayor to a council manager form of government about seven, six or seven years ago. So, um, and then the city of Portland just went through a charter change that changed their structure, how, how the government functioned. Another one reason people do it is to add accountability, and maybe the charter isn't working well. Maybe the government hasn't been functioning well. That's some of the argument that I think a number of folks made in the Portland area that, you know, they wanted to change that structure. The commission form that was there wasn't functioning well for the city, and so they made that change. And then just review has become kind of a standard practice. So, some charters have a set time period, like the county, Umatilla County has a charter. It says in the charter, they shall appoint a charter review committee every four years. So, they have a committee that takes a look at it, proposes changes. Um, another reason why we're, uh, bringing it forward is you adopted as a goal, uh, in the last goal-setting process. It's been ten years. I think, for me, ten years is more, kind of a more reasonable time. Every four years seems a little, little soon from a, from the county standpoint, but, and then the other thing, review doesn't necessarily have to equal change. It's kind of just checking in, making sure the, the pieces that are there are functioning like we want them to, and, and there may be no need to make any changes. But it's, I think it's good practice to kind of take a look at it on a regular basis. So, as we've been, since the goal was adopted, the staff, staff has been just kind of looking at different items within the charter that we might consider or propose that should be at least looked at and, and discussed, and whether we should make any changes. First ward boundaries. So, those, the, the current ward boundaries have become, uh, very unequal in population. Uh, there's some that are, that have grown quite a bit, and other parts of the city haven't grown as much. So, the populations are very unequal, I, I mean, by several thousand people within those current wards. That's one that I think seriously needs to be considered, so that those wards become, become again closer to equal in population. Then, um, another one that we've kind of looked at is just kind of the council structure and the ward election procedures. So, uh, a lot of times when people think of a ward or a district election, they think that the people within that ward vote for those, are the only ones that vote for the people elected from that ward. Ours is different. They have to live within the ward, but the whole city votes for all of them. So, um, we know of some cities in the region that have run into some issues, um, with that, uh, from a equal representation standpoint. Uh, Department of Justice got involved. So, whether we want to change that or not, that's kind of up to discussion, but that's something we thought should be at least talked about. Uh, the other one, uh, we have an ordinance adoption procedure that's laid out in the charter. It doesn't really match exactly what we do now to adopt an ordinance. And also, we don't have to go through, you know, um, the state legislature does this where, um, technically they have to read the whole, the language of the bill unless they waive their rules. And so, um, you know, when those kinds of rules were put in place, most people didn't read, and there was, it was kind of a different situation. And so, we could streamline our ordinance adoption procedure where we didn't have to do a special, uh, procedure to adopt it in one meeting and things like that. I mean, there's some cities that have looked at, that have done that. So, that's another one we just thought should be talked about, considered. Uh, another one, this came up the last time in two thousand fifteen when we were talking about, uh, the charter was, we're one of five cities that elect their municipal judge in the state. And so, is that something we still want to continue? It, uh, it really limits the pool of, uh, people who can, uh, serve as a judge, because then if they have to run for election, that means they have to be an elector. They have to live in the city and they have to be a voter. Um, so, just another one to consider. Uh, most cities have gone to an appointed judge. Um, uh, another one that I, I would recommend that the council at least, or the, the process consider is it, right now, the charter requires that the city manager live within the city limits. I personally like that. I think that's a good thing, but I think going forward, it's going to limit, it could limit the, uh, the pool of candidates for, uh, a future city manager hiring process. Just, uh, just as I watch things around our region and in other places, that it could be something that could come up. And there's some, you know, you could put some language in there. I know, I think it's in the city of Umatilla, it's, it, it wants, it requires residency, but the council can waive that, it, through a council action or something like that. Just gives the council a little bit of flexibility in case, uh, there's a situation that they'd like to, that the city manager would like to live outside of the city limits. Just, just, uh, kind of looking forward in, in the future. And then the, the last one that we have, kind of from a staff standpoint, um, and one that was, uh, brought up by the League of, uh, Oregon Cities when, and I visited with them, um, right now, the city council hires the city attorney and is, but in a lot of places that it's, that the city attorney is, is, um, hired by the city manager, like the rest of the staff, and because the city council doesn't do a lot of day-to-day supervision, you know, that type of thing. That's just one point that a lot of other charters have gone another direction. Just something to consider. Not any real recommendation on any of those, just some things that we would, we would, uh, say need to be considered. So, as a, uh, just a discussion of the process that we might go through in a charter review. Uh, in two thousand fifteen, it really was a council-driven process. There was no, uh, city, there was no citizen committee or anything like that. Uh, as I've been reviewing, um, documents and recom, and recommendations from the National Civic League, the National Civic League wrote a model city charter that kind of all the states have used and modified to fit their laws and use. And the League of Oregon Cities has a model city charter as well, uh, that we actually used when we, we drafted the two thousand fifteen charter. And then talking with, uh, Patty Mulvihill, the executive director, and just her experience in helping cities go through that process in her time, um, I've, I've kind of changed my thoughts a little bit. My initial reaction was, maybe we should just go through, have the council look at it again and, and kind of do that. But, uh, kind of like I showed in the first slide, it, it's kind of the, the peoples, it's the citizens document, kind of that governs, and so, having a, a citizen committee that took an in-depth look at it and then made recommendations to the council, who would make the final, uh, recommendation to the ballot, that's kind of where, what I have, um, what I'm recommending at this point, uh, without any, you know, prior to discussion with you, uh, on that. But, then city staff would, would work with that committee, uh, the city manager, the city attorney, the city recorder, all of us have different pieces that we work with in the charter and, and how we can, uh, help and provide research and, and kind of comment on how it would work, uh, from a, just a practical standpoint. So, they would bring the recommendations to the council for final review, and then the council can choose to refer that to the ballot if there were any changes to be proposed, or they could choose not to. And recently, just locally, uh, Umatilla County, there was some recommendations brought forward that were put on the ballot and some from the committee that the commissioners chose not to put on the ballot for, for consideration by the voters. So, it really is the elected body's final, kind of final decision on that. But, um, that's kind of a quick overview. I want to just, um, this, this statement really, really here is one of the reasons I like to work in local government versus working for the state. Of all levels of government, local government is by far the most common point of contact for the average citizen. In fact, it is difficult to imagine any important aspect of American life that is insulated from the influence of local government. An individual may interact with federal or state agencies a handful of times in an entire lifetime, but he or she will interact with local government employees on a much more frequent basis while speaking to a police officer, paying a water bill, or greeting the people who have come to collect the garbage. So, this, it's the, the, the level of government that touches people the most, and so, kind of having that citizen input into this process, that, that's kind of, kind of what swayed me to kind of make the recommendation or to start the discussion with those types of things. So, be happy to hear your thoughts, your feedback.
Councillor Smith, um, sorry, city manager Smith, uh, do you believe, uh, that if the wards were redistricted, it may, or redrawn, probably is the more accurate term, uh, would probably lead to a higher turnout of candidates for those wards?
Um, I'm not that hopeful, no.
Me either, but, you know.
I mean, I think, I don't think people realize, you know, whether the, what the boundaries mean as far as population. And, um, I asked, I had Clint Spencer kind of look at what, what it would look like, just one way that we could redraw them. And it doesn't change it a lot, but it does kind of shift things around a little bit. And so, it might open up people more interest, but I'm, I'm not real confident that it would change it drastically.
Thank you. Council have any other questions or discussion?
I think I would be more open to, uh, looking at the boundaries per se for, for the wards, um, even though, right now, there may not be, uh, any hope for a lot of engagement. But I think that we have seen at the last election how there were more people that were running for a council position. So, I mean, I think once people have a better idea, um, of how the system works, then I think, prior to an election, I mean, uh, just a suggestion, an idea, would be kind of educating, um, the community members about how to go about and who represents who and what, you know, what that, the wards mean to them. I think that will create more understanding on the residents part, and I think maybe by knowing that bit of information, that might spark an interest in someone running.
It, it might, but I think what's more important is it's just not a fair, the current situation isn't a fair representation for different parts of the city, you know? So, you know, every, every, uh, ten years, our legis, our, our congressional districts are redrawn so that they're equal population as much as possible, so that every, but every person in Congress represents roughly the same number of people. And so, I think that that, from that standpoint, that's why we need to, we can definitely do a better, you know, try to do more education and help people understand what those are. And then, you know, having a discussion, I know it was election that took place right before I came, but I know at that point, there were council candidates that didn't realize that even, that, that they thought because they were running in a certain ward, that only the people that lived there could vote for them. And so, they were telling their friends or people they knew that lived outside of their ward that say, yeah, you can't vote for me. And so, they didn't realize that the whole city voted for them. And so, you know, I, I think we can do, try to do a better job of educating on, on that point. But, um, also, I, I'm just not sure, I mean, the whole idea of a ward is to try to, uh, make sure that we don't leave any particular part of the city behind in, in the discussion, that there are, everybody has kind of that representation. And when the whole city votes for that person, I'm not sure that you get as much of that as you would if, if each ward. But, I mean, it, it does at least require that person to live there, so then they, you know, at least have that experience of being closer to that group of people. So, it could stay the same. Um, we have seen in other cities, not in our state, but in other cities with a similar setup that we currently have, you have that challenged and, uh, that they were required to change by the federal government because of not being in compliance with the Voting Rights Act. So.
Well, I appreciate the discussion that you bring forward. I know that it's been part of your comments that you've made, I think, at least twice when we've had our goal-setting meetings, uh, where the charter review has come up. So, I appreciate the information. I think it's very valuable to us, and I, I am in favor of the charter review process of having, um, community members be part of a, a committee to be able to help us, um, see this, you know, and, uh, that's another way to engage, I guess, our, our community in having a say in, in our process. So, I appreciate that. So, I, I thank you for the presentation.
Go ahead.
First of all, a clarifying question. When you talked about it was challenged, are you talking about challenged in court saying that it has to be the voters of the ward only that vote, or it was challenged that everybody gets a chance to vote?
It was challenged that, that they were not giving equal representation to everybody in the city by having everybody vote on the vote, on individual ward elections.
Okay.
So, they had to change. It was the city of Pasco, and it was a few years ago. And we've kind of reviewed, initially reviewed some of that information, but, um, that's, that was it. It was, the, the whole city, they felt that it was unequal because the whole city was voting even though you had to live in a certain ward.
Okay.
It was taking away some of that representation, equal representation.
And there, has that gone through the court?
Mm-hmm.
And, and it ruled?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so Pasco had to change their voting, their, uh.
Was that a Washington process, or was that a federal?
It was, it was the Department of Justice from the federal level that did that.
Okay, so, we're kind of bound by that now?
Um, not necessarily.
Okay.
But, I mean, it just, from my standpoint, it makes me a little more nervous.
Mm-hmm.
That we could get challenged.
Okay.
Because someone could see the same situation here that's familiar with that and say, hey, you guys are doing the same thing. Well, that's not fair.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know, this is just throwing this out for, for seeing both sides of this, that I think the last two elections, Umatilla County has had the lowest voter turnout in the entire state.
Yes.
And so the.
I think it's just the last two.
Yeah, it's been a lot, at least the last two.
Yeah.
And so, the challenge, of course, is if you now limit it to only certain wards, you could have a very tiny number of people selecting representatives that vote for the entire citizenry of Hermiston too. So, I can see both sides of it, and that's where, you know, it would be up, I think, for discussion to say which way is better. But obviously, if the courts are painting us into a certain corner, well, that's, that's different, but.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, I, we've had discussions with, uh, the city attorney and I about that, and I'm not sure that we're bound by it. We're not. I would say we're not, but it just makes me nervous that we could be a target, and I, I don't like to have us be the target of those kinds of things.
For sure. And then, one more. Um, this is more about the cost. Um, obviously, this has to go before the voters, and so, if we're doing it every ten years, we, we want to make sure we're, we're getting our best bang for the buck, if you will. How mu, how much does it cost to, to go through this process and put it before the voters?
Um, I mean, mostly, the way I propose it, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be proposing that we hire many, like, consultants or anything that we, staff would run it. We may need to hire somebody to help us maybe draft some of the language, make sure we were doing it pretty close. But we, we think we can do most of it in-house.
Okay.
And, uh, because, I mean, kind of looking at a potential schedule, if we put it on, if we were to shoot to put it on the May ballot next year, we would already have items on the ballot.
Okay.
Because of our elections. And so, it really wouldn't cost us any extra with the county elections.
Okay. And that's just from my own thought process. If we, if we do something now, and then we see that it doesn't work, or we make a mistake, then you have to turn around and do it again.
Yeah.
So, there's obviously an incentive to get it right the first time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's an important consideration that, well, for one, of course, just clarifying that, we're considering both redrawing the wards themselves, but also, maybe only the people in those wards vote for their particular representatives. I think an important thing to consider is that if we're going to have some kind of public committee to consider charter review, they'd be a good voice for whether or not they think that's the idea.
Right.
Anybody else? Go ahead, uh, councillor, bro.
Thank you. And, city manager, you, you talked a little bit about the scope of what you'd want the charter review committee to look at. I guess, I, I'd kind of want to know a little bit more, uh, a timeline, more or less, uh, of what you think. Is this like a year process? And more or less, I guess, the members comprised of that committee, is it going to be kind of like the budget committee where it's members of council, members of the public? How does that look like?
Well, the way I have it kind of in my mind right now would be that it would take maybe the rest of this year to do that process. Um, sometime to where we get to the point, whatever the deadline is, to get something on the May ballot, you know? So, that's a little bit into next year as well. And I would envision, I mean, after kind of reading the documents and the thoughts behind, the, I, I would say that this would need to be just a citizen committee. No members of the council on it. The council will get to review what they come up with, but have it just be a citizen and have it go through the similar process.
For sure.
You know, we open it up for people who are interested. The vacancy review board reviews those applications, and then the mayor points with the council, you know, um, confirming those.
Thank you for giving me a little clarification on that. I think it's a really important process, and I think it's important for us to also hear what the citizens are also recommended, recommending for, as you said, their, their charter or their constitution.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I was, quite frankly, a little disappointed, um, when, when the county didn't fully go with the recommendations of the people. And so, I am interested in hearing what, uh, just neutral people have to say after looking at it, doing the research. Uh, I understand a little bit of the issue in Pasco, uh, especially if, um, with, there's more and more people moving to Pasco. There's probably certain areas still, uh, in Pasco that are, uh, more traditional, or maybe how Pasco was back in the day. And so, when having a new infusion of voters or new people coming in, it can, uh, dilute, uh, the votes. And so, a certain, a particular area might, would want their particular representative representing their interests. And so, I can see it that way. And, uh, I just look forward to hearing what, uh, Charter Review Committee has to say.
Councillor Linton, did you have something?
Um, with the idea of having the hiring of a, a city attorney, I think it should stay the same, but the council be a part of that. And if you, uh, as a city manager, be a part of that as well. But I think that we should, um, continue to be a part of that. And, um, there's one other thing too. With the people setting up a committee, I think there still should be at least one council member on there, even though it's going to be brought to the council. But, um, just to be a part of it, uh, as it has been in the past. If it's working, then, you know, if it's not broken, then I'd like, think it should stay the same.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Anything else, manager Smith?
No, I mean, I guess I'm going to summarize what I'm hearing, that we're okay with some kind of a charter review committee process, and that, um, uh, so, my plan will be to bring forward a resolution at your next meeting that would establish that committee, set up some membership as far as number of people, that kind of thing, and then, um, and then have you guys adopt that, and we move forward with the process. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That seems appropriate.
The, um, uh, the one question I know councillor Linton mentioned it, any strong feelings, whether there's a member of the council on that or not, uh, from anybody else?
Go ahead and coun, councillor council.
I think it'd be important for at least the mayor to be on the, on the.
Okay.
Committee. I don't know if council needs to be members, but there should be. I think the mayor should definitely be represented there.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure so much about the mayor. That's a, a good idea, but at least a liaison that, that is present at the meeting. Just, I think that would be appropriate for, for the council to, to at least witness it, so.
Okay.
And I would agree with councillor Kelso that, um, the mayor should be part of that.
Okay. All right. Any other final thoughts before we finish?
Uh, I agree. The mayor liaison, I think, would be excellent. Um, and these meetings would be open to the public, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we, we could attend if.
Yeah, I mean, every, anybody could attend and, and listen in and comment, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, so I'd be in favor of something like that.
Okay.
Perfect. And I think there's additional discussion to be had when whatever recommendation is brought in front of council, but I think we've got the building blocks to get started. Right.
Right. And, and like I said, I didn't, I, I don't have, I didn't make any recommendation tonight on those items, and I would say this re, this resolution would give the charter committee a chance to look at. And I would say this re- this resolution would give the charter committee a chance to look at everything. They could go through all the document. It's not a, it's not a long document and, and take a look. These are just things that, you know, as we've looked at it, that we would think need to be at least considered. So that's all.
And just to make, uh, just to clarify, it's the vacancy review committee that's going to appoint these or who would appoint the members?
Yeah, I would say we would seek, um, applications, then the vacancy review committee would review those and make, uh, and then the mayor appoint with council, um, kind of confirmation, like we do with all the committees right now.
Thank you. So it'll probably take a little bit before we have a formed committee.
Right, right.
Go ahead councillor.
And, and that just begs a question because we already have a hard time filling committees. Um, what happens if we don't get enough applicants? What's the, the default process then?
And then we ask all of you to go out find some people. I, I, you know, I, I don't know. I think this, I think this will generate some interest in the community and, and if people are out talking, I, I think we can find some folks. But yeah, I mean, if we don't, we probably take a little longer and try to find enough people. That's what I would say. Cause you'd want that, you want that group to really have a, to have a good discussion about it. And if there isn't enough, then we need to find those people.
And, and I think we've got a, a pool from, you know, with, we've got two civic leadership academies who've been through, we've got past, uh, councillors, we've got other committee members who might also be interested. I think we've got a significant pool that there'd be people interested in at least reviewing the document. So. All right. Anything else?
Sorry, just.
You got time.
I was curious about just even the size of the committee. Uh, is it seven, nine?
What I recommended was seven, but I mean, it didn't, uh, as again, just a thought, that, that's kind of a, a good sized group, but it's not kind of unwieldy. But I mean, it could go bigger if we wanted it to.
I think that's.
Any thought, any other comments on that? Any thoughts on a number? Okay.
All right. Perfect. Councillors, um, I keep doing that. City manager Smith, anything else?
That's all I had for you. You guys didn't talk a lot.
All right. Just review. Yeah. All right. Well, then, uh, I will go ahead and adjourn the, uh, work session. We'll reconvene in just over a half hour at seven for the regular city council meeting.
All right, it's seven o'clock. If you're not familiar with me, I'm Council President David. Our mayor is away on vacation. I'll go ahead and call the city council meeting to order with declaration of quorum. Councilors Hayward and Myers are excused. Please join me in the flexible.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the last meeting that I presided over was under half an hour, and I don't think I'm going to get there today, but we'll see how it goes. All right, City Manager Smith, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, then we come to our first opportunity for citizen input. This will be on non-agenda items, so if anyone has wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda, you're asked to please do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes. Come up to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and please direct your comments to me.
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening, President. My name is Wayne Willey. I am a resident of the Summit Oaks neighborhood, 745 East Quince Avenue, a historically peaceful and desirable neighborhood that many of us have been proud to call home for years. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and many of my concerned neighbors about a serious and escalating problem. At the end of our street, a property has become a hub for criminal activity, 435 Southeast 8th Street, primarily involving drug use and prostitution. At all hours, individuals can be seen coming and going, often visibly under the influence, stumbling, yelling, at times passing out in public areas. This behavior is not only deeply unsettling, it poses a clear threat to our safety, well-being, and quality of life. Despite multiple calls and commendable response efforts by local police, no lasting action seems to be taken. We understand that law enforcement is often limited by legal constraints and resource challenges, but the current approach is not working. The problem persists, and it's growing worse. On a daily basis, there is a police and law enforcement presence, including this morning and later this afternoon. An impact on our community is profound. Many of our elderly neighbors are now afraid to leave their homes, fearing encounters with individuals exhibiting unpredictable behavior. Parents keep their children indoors, depriving them of the freedom to safely play outside in what should be a secure neighborhood. We are watching our sense of safety and community deteriorate in real time. I'm not here tonight to place blame, I'm here to ask for help. We need meaningful intervention, whether through enforcement, rehabilitation outreach, housing inspections, stricter property management oversight to restore safety and dignity to our neighborhood. We urge the council to take this concern or concerns seriously and work with all necessary agencies to implement a sustainable solution. This is not just about property values or peace and quiet, it's about preserving the safety and integrity of a neighborhood that we all value. Thank you for your time.
My name is Manuel Gutierrez, and I own the residence at 750 East Queens, and I'm between houses, but I got the same concern, you know. In the daytime, I used to think it was people walking into the courthouse, you know, they're located in 9th Street in Columbia, but when you see the activity in the nighttime, I consume because there's a new generation moving into the neighborhood, and they have children, and we need to protect our children. And I know Mark lives right there in Palm Street, or he's pretty close to, but probably will ask the chief, you know, continue asking the officers to continue going by and keep an eye. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has any other input on non-agenda items? All right, then moving on to our consent agenda. Does the council have any questions? We have items A through G. Does the council have any questions on those?
I would like to remove item D from the consent agenda, please.
All right, perfect. So item D, award funding through transient room tax, TRT recreation projects grants, we'll pull that. Any other questions on items A through G?
I would like to pull F.
Perfect. F, grant of easement to Windwave Communications for Fiber Optics. The items D and F being pulled. Any other council questions? Do we have any public comment on the items A, B, C, E, and G? Do we have, are there any council comments on those items? All right, do we have, so I'll need a motion to approve then, items A, consent agenda items A, B, C, E, and G.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Counselor Barone, motion second by Counselor Roberts. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Perfect. Motion passes. Just as a reminder, even though I'm sitting in for the mayor as a member of the council, I still do get to vote. All right, then we had a couple of items removed from consent agenda, so we'll start with item D, award funding through the transient room tax, TRT recreation projects grants. Counsel Roberts?
Yes, so this is my first kind of time dealing with the transient room tax, and it's a significant expenditure that we're looking to authorize, and so the questions that I had were basically, you know, how did we come to the $125,000 mark? We're looking to exceed that, and then just kind of have an open discussion about that before we approve it, is kind of what I was thinking, so.
Sure, so the $125,000 is a very conservative estimate. This particular fund receives a certain percentage of the transient room tax, and so that that was the original number that we kind of planned for the budget. It is a conservative number, and we have exceeded that over the past number of years, and we also have accumulated some additional funds in that particular fund, and so there is adequate funding to to meet all the needs, and if you notice that it did, we didn't even approve all of that was requested, but that that's kind of where we're at with as far as being able to meet that requested amount.
Anything else? Do we need to look at adjusting that in the future budget then, if we're consistently going over that?
We, I mean, we try to be conservative so that we're not, you know, under what we project, but we will, we'll be watching that a little closer. I know Mr. Palacios and I had a conversation with Mr. Arts about being a little more clear that we're going to stick with whatever the budget, and then look at what what we can do with some of the accumulated funds and accomplishing some projects that that we want to get done as well within the park system.
Okay, and one more. I know we're looking, since we go over, we take from the reserves. What is a comfortable reserve that we'd like to keep on hand in there?
That that's a discussion we'll have to come to. I don't know.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Because frankly, the applications have increased, I would say, almost exponentially over the last three years.
Right.
So.
Well, even from the previous year to this year.
Right.
Yeah. Many, many repeat requests were more than double what they asked for last year. Any other council questions on this item? Go ahead, Counselor.
I would like to know how many, are there any other people that are clubs or nonprofits besides the ones that are listed and were granted funds that are not on here?
I didn't, I'll ask.
I can answer that question.
Counselor McCarthy, I didn't attend these meetings, and Mr. Arts is on vacation.
Yeah, so there were, I handed in all of my, everything I took notes on, because I used the handouts that were there, so I don't have them in front of me anymore. But we, you'll notice that the requests that were granted, the awards that were granted, don't even come close to the total requested. We actually had a number of entities that didn't receive any funding. We had a number of entities that received partial funding, and part of the discussion inside the committee was, did we feel that not only was their presentation valuable enough, but did it actually have any level of impact that was relevant to increasing economy and tourism within the city? And so some of those, the committee did not feel met the requirements, so they weren't awarded anything. I don't, the list is too long for me to be able to repeat here, but I know, I know there was even some city-related activities, like the food pod had some requests that the committee didn't feel were relevant to TRT. I know Eotech had some requests, and even the downtown district, while they asked for close to, I think, double what we awarded. So there was, and we stayed almost another two to three hours after the actual presentations were done to just continue deliberations before we settled on the amounts that were awarded.
Okay. I noticed here that Park and Recreation, that they put in, and they got a grant, they have a budget. Is there not enough money in their budget for them? Because I don't see why they would be putting in for grant money.
Well, I mean, this, this grant money allows them to do some of these community events for no charge. I mean, generally, we have a charge for the programs, and so that's, for these particular events, that's why they're doing, that's why they're requesting money from this fund. They do have other budgeted funds, but these are events that we feel generate tourism activity on top of our normal.
And there was a very specific report, which I'm sure can be presented to the council, but of which events were relevant to what Parks and Rec were asking for. This was not specific to just, let's give Parks and Rec another 12 grand. It was very specific to, here's how much we think this event will bring in, here's how much this event will cost, and all of that. So every person who submits an application goes through a process of what they believe will bring income and relevance, and how many people it will serve. So there's a number of requirements they have to meet just to submit that application. And so they gave a presentation that the, I know the committee, I think it was unanimous in their support of Parks and Rec receiving this award.
Yeah, I understand that, but it seems to me, you know, because Park and Rec has a very large, I think over 700 and something thousand in their budget. So do we need to increase their budget by 20 grand or something, so they'll be able to do this without asking for money out of this particular fund?
I think that's a good question for the budget committee to answer, but I know that part of the reason Parks and Rec was doing this was because of related budget cuts to their program. They couldn't, they couldn't, yes.
Well, I mean, this is.
Well, and that, and increasing costs for the programs.
Right. So, I mean, we fund Parks and Rec typically mostly with, with general fund dollars, property tax dollars, and so they only go so far versus everything else that gets paid out of that. And so this is a way that they can do a few additional events with that. I mean, we can talk about how that would work and going forward. And I can get, I can make, get a better report of all the requested funds if the council would be interested in that.
Do we have any other council questions on this? Go ahead, Counselor.
It was, I guess, more of a comment than a question, so.
I think, do we have any other council questions on this item? Do we have any, well, I'll go to public comment on this first. All right, council comments. Go ahead, Counselor. Oh, you first, sorry.
I guess my only comment would be kind of what City Manager Smith just brought up earlier, just like what we do with, shoot, I'm losing my train of thought right now. We, with the TRT applications for the facade grants, we usually have like at least the summary or an idea of what they're applying for, what they're looking for. And inevitably, most of the, most of the time, the council will go with the recommendations and the hard work of what the committee has done, but at times, the council, you know, can approve or do something different. I think it's really hard to do that when, when there is no information to really go off of in the packet. And so I just want to put that comment. I think it'd be a good idea in the future to have those recommendations or packets, or I guess, the minutes from that meeting would be great to have here. But I also want to comment that, and I've talked to City Manager Smith about this earlier, but in the summary, it does include me as being present at the committee, and I was not present at that committee. So if and when this does just pass, to have me stricken, or I guess have that part stricken, because I wasn't present at the meeting. And so I just want to make sure that it's clear for the record, because I'm no longer on that committee, and so I didn't attend.
Thank you. I missed that. Should be me there.
Yeah.
Did you have something as well?
I'd like the suggestion of having like a minor description. I don't think it has to be a long paragraph, but I think something that we can learn more about the project. But I guess my take was on how the money that is going to be, if awarded, it impacts a lot of our youth. It impacts a lot of sectors of our community. So I personally just wanted to take the time to thank the members that read through all of the entries that were done. This is only two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10 people that are going to be awarded in comparison to a lot more that put in for a grant. I've know, I know that I participated through the county in reading some grants that people apply for. So I know that it's time consuming. So I want to take the time to thank those committee members that read through all of these grants and carefully had discussions about why and how much each, you know, organization was going to be awarded, and also for having the insight perhaps in knowing how this was going to impact our youth. I think often the concern is that our youth has to be involved in healthy activities in order for us to have a safe community. And this, that is basically what I, what I see. I see lighting cameras so that families can go and play at the park. I see the Hero Sports Complex that we know is bringing a lot of people from outside our community, and it's introducing them to other parts of our community here, that it's bringing, you know, some economic development. So I see a lot of good things coming out of this. So I appreciate, although it seems like a huge amount, but I also, we hopefully will have the return on investment by seeing more people visiting our area, more people feeling comfortable in maybe having other kinds of competitions at the Hero's Sports Complex. And, you know, I see not only sports, but I see the fine arts in the orchestra events. I appreciate the thought of also providing some free events for the community, because let's face it, I think a lot of our families are hurting. Prices are going up everywhere, and it's expensive to take a family out to, you know, have a good time. So enough of my soapbox. I just want to say thank you to the committee members, and for those of you that were involved in the discussion, and I appreciate the money that was set aside. And yeah, we should maybe revisit and see if we need to be more limiting on, and sticking with what we have, or whether we need to increase the funds so that as we see that the need increases in our community, perhaps seeing if maybe the amount needs to be increased in our budget.
I believe the current guidelines of that committee allow for, upon committee recommendation, to go over the amount that was initially proposed, although I suppose that's something we could review, correct?
Yes. I mean, there are no specific guidelines related to that. That has been a common practice of this committee, and, you know, like I said, we've talked with Recreation about making sure we, we budget accurately, and then we stick to that, kind of moving forward in the future.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
So I've been on this committee for the past few years, and I can tell you, one of the hardest things about serving on this committee is trying to allocate the limited funds available in the budget to what are all worthy causes. I mean, these are just, in my point, from my point of view, these are all culturally enhancing or physically enhancing, you know, promoting sports and recreation. But I do like that the arts are on there as well, and cultural events like Cinco de Mayo, I think that's hugely important for our community to have an event like that. So I can speak from personal firsthand experience that one of the hardest things to do is to take all of the requests that you get and deny or trim any of them, because they're all, they're all awesome, in my opinion.
And we had to do that to the tune of about $100,000, as they noted that.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm not on the committee this year, because that might have killed me. I mean, that, it's just hard to do. So I commend the committee for keeping it to the level that they did in going over the budgeted amount at 140,750. I don't see a problem with that number. As the city manager has said, we've gone over that number every year for the past few years, so it seems to be common practice. If there were more money in the pot, that would be, that would be great, but there's not a bad cause in this list, and I just wish there was more money to go around.
Perfect. You basically said what I was going to say, is I want to applaud also just everyone on the committee and Chairperson Hunter Tibbles for leading that. Very difficult to get through. We had to go back and forth and revisit some people, change some amounts to kind of get to where, to where we were. So I want to applaud the committee for that. And if you would ever like to say no to a bunch of people asking for money, I recommend you make your recommendations now, so the mayor can appoint you next year. Any other council comments on this item D on the consent agenda? Go for it.
So a good point was brought up, that we wish we had more money in the pot, and it's, as we're talking this over and we're talking about the various events, it just, it resonates with me that this money comes in because people come and visit the city. So we collect it through tourism. We're investing it, hoping that we'll get more tourism out of it, which is going to generate more money. So it's really kind of a self-sustaining, if not growing, funding revenue for tourism, especially like the Hero Sports Complex. That's going to be beneficial to more than just the Hero Sports Complex. That's Eotech as a whole. Same thing with the cameras and safety things. We're getting benefits that are outside of tourism but are linked to tourism, so we've got multifaceted use. But the more we can encourage people to come into the city, the more that pot's going to grow, and I look forward to that, so.
Just to add on, I think it's also important to mention that our TRT revenue has increased year after year. The percent, even though as council, we've changed it, I think it's more important that we're just having a bigger, more revenue, because the pie is getting bigger all around. And so that's something that needs to also be acknowledged, that when, when the amounts are over, it's knowing that we have this amount of revenue coming in as well.
Yeah, and I'll say, the committee was definitely very aware that we had the money to be able to do this. Any other council comments?
No question. Since it was brought out, brought up about tourism, has there been any kind of account or increase in tourism over the last few years? Are you aware, or do you know?
I mean, the only objective measure that we have to even try to do that with is funding that, I mean, is the TRT tax. And it has grown over the past years. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it has grown. And, you know, that number is a little bit of a weak approximation of tourism, because we have a lot of business travel that generates that tax as well as tourist travel. So it's hard to say this is tourism and not, but in general, we can say from that one measure, yes, it's growing at some level. We can attribute it to certain events, but we can say it's growing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other council comments? All right, then I'll call for a motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda, item D, award funding through the transient room tax, TRT Recreation Projects Grants.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Moved by Counselor Duran, second by Counselor Roberts. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank.
I'm going to say no, just because I wanted to do the amendment to make sure the name is off, but if there, if this can just pass, then, okay, then yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. On to consent agenda, item F, grant of easement to Windwave Communications for Fiber Optics. Counselor Linton?
Yes. I was just wondering, were there any other companies that put in to do this? Or just, is this the only company that requested to do this?
In this specific easement, it's only Windway that requested the easement.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And we would work with any company that would request.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any council questions on this item? Any public comment? Any council comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, item F, grant of easement to Windwave Communications for Fiber Optics.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duran, second by Counselor Roberts. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to Section 9A, Public Hearings, a zoning map amendment for N 2811 AD, Tax Lot 100, the Hub Hermiston. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council? All right, hearing guidelines will now be presented by city staff planning director Clint Spencer.
Thank you. The city council is holding a hearing to consider amending the city's zoning map designation for land located on the north side of East Diagonal Boulevard, west of Northeast 10th Street. The proposed amendment will add the neighborhood commercial overlay zone to the south 3.71 acres of the site described as 4N 2811 AD, Tax Lot 100. The applicant is Jeff Bolton of Multitec Engineering. The applicable substantive criteria relied upon by the city in rendering the decision to amend the zoning map are contained in 157 226 of the Hermiston Code of Ordinances. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations, which the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue by the close of the record at or following the hearing, in person or by letter, precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, based on that issue. Failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to LUBA based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing pursuant to ORS 197 763 6B, or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony pursuant to ORS 197 767 6C. For this hearing, the process begins with the staff report, followed by testimony from the applicants and other supporters of the application. This will be followed by opponents to the application, and finally, a rebuttal by the applicant will be allowed. The public hearing portion of the procedure will then be closed, and the city council will consider the information and testimony received and render a decision.
Thank you, Clint. Hearing is now open. City staff will now present its report. Back to you, Clint.
Hey, thank you. And Lily, can you put the mouse on the right spot? There we go. Thank you. So tonight, as mentioned in the hearing guidelines, the city council is holding a hearing to consider a rezone for this property located at 963 East Diagonal Boulevard. The property is split zoned. The north 8.63 acres is owned Medium High Density Residential, or R3, and the south 3.71 acres is owned Outlying Commercial. On the map that you see there, the green area in the roughly trapezoidal lot is the existing R3 area. The blue area that is hashed out with a crosshatching along Diagonal Boulevard is the area that's currently C2 and is proposed to have the NCO overlay added to that. The area, the applicant seeks to amend that by adding the NCO designation, and the NCO designation adds multifamily housing and mini storages to the conditionally permitted C2 uses. In essence, it's, it's a commercial zone that, we call it a neighborhood commercial zone. It allows for. It allows for all of the existing commercial uses, but then adds in the ability to have high-density multifamily as well as mini storage, because both of those things are things that we have found there's quite a bit of demand for near commercial and population centers. The area under consideration is majority residential now. Land to the north, that's the area in white on your map, is open space and contains the Baker's Pond wetland area, an electric substation, and some rural single-family development. Land to the west contains commercial and industrial development, which would be Oso Clean, and the Santiago Manufactured Dwelling Park. And land to the south is developed with single-family residential development. It is also located near Diamond Run Development to the east, Sansone Middle School, and there are two acres of vacant commercial land as well. The property location on a major collector's street in close proximity to a middle school and walking distance to two elementary schools, and with the variety of different types of housing within 500 feet from single-family to duplex, it's well-suited to accommodate multifamily and mini storage uses. The proposed zone change adds the neighborhood commercial overlay to our existing commercial zoning on the south 3.71 acres of the site. This is a site that was entirely rezoned back in 2017. It was, at that point in time, the entire area north of Diagonal was zoned industrial, and the city council and city staff, in conjunction with the property owners, undertook a project to rezone the entire area to support future residential uses and commercial uses that would support that high-density major collector along Diagonal. Before anybody wonders, there is, is not rezoning the entire area to NCO. You'll see on the map those two lots that are at the intersection of 10th and Diagonal on the far right side of your display. Those remain purely commercial. At this time, housing is not, would not be an option, and they are not part of this rezon. The Planning Commission considered multiple requests for this property back on June 11th, and there were also some administrative staff-level land use actions that we've done on this site. I mentioned that the NCO zone adds multifamily and mini storage as conditional uses, and at that June meeting, the Planning Commission considered not only the application of the NCO zoning, but a conditional use permit application for housing and mini storage on the subject area. The Planning Commission did approve the conditional use for both the mini storage and the multifamily, and recommended to the city council that the application of the NCO zoning be appropriate. However, the approval of those conditional use permits was contingent upon the city council's approval of this rezon. If the rezoning is not approved, only the portions of the multifamily on the north area in the green, that's about 190 units, would be permitted outright, and those we have already approved administratively at the staff level. You'll see several comments from ODOT in the record, and you are also provided a new supplemental memo today, which we feel resolves the issue from ODOT relating to the intersection of Elm and 395. ODOT originally in June recommended denial of the entire development based on the potential impacts at Elm and 395. Mostly that was based on some issues in the original study, which put the existing capacity much higher than it actually was. Several revisions have, to that study have now been done, and ODOT is satisfied with all of the impacts, with the exception of future mitigation of Elm and 395. And since this intersection has had capacity issues for going on a couple of decades now, staff has been negotiating with ODOT to protect the city's development rights and our future ability to consider growth, which is not directly adjacent to the highway network. I mean, Elm is a good three-quarters of a mile away from this development, that intersection, and so we don't want to have all of the city's future development being considered in light of one intersection, which is an intersection of two state highways. We've reached a tentative agreement to share future responsibility for intersection upgrades between the city and ODOT, and that shared responsibility allows the city to collect fees for mitigation and hold those fees until needed, rather than have to revisit the issue of this intersection each time a new development is proposed. To put your, put that into your mind, and without an agreement like this with ODOT, you know, when something happens, say at Pumpkin Center and Gear, we have 80 acres of residential land there, that could be something that would be held hostage to future concerns of the Elm 395 intersection. So using energy's engineering strategy, sorry, city can work with developers to determine exactly how, what the proportion of trips any development might generate, and then consider appropriate funding. Now that staff and ODOT has reached this high-level agreement to enter into an IGA, we're recommending that the city council accept the Planning Commission recommendation and rezone the south 3.71 acres of the site by adding the NCO overlay. And approval of this addition to the zoning map will also satisfy the conditions of approval placed on the, placed on the development by the Planning Commission, and no amendment of those original conditions is recommended. It's a lot.
All right, thank you very much. Good job, Clint. Public testimony portion, people wishing to speak are asked to state their name and mailing address and limit their testimony to five minutes. First, we'll go for proponents. Are there any proponents who wish to speak? Are there any neutral parties who wish to speak? Are there any opponents or remonsters who wish to speak? Hearing is now closed. All right, are there any council questions, comments, or discussion on the hearing?
Mr. Clint, you mentioned about fees being collected, and can you tell me where those, who would be collecting the fees from, and?
They would be collected from a developer at the time, usually either the time building permit is issued or prior to occupancy. In the case of something like this, we've been working with the developer already on mitigation fees because ODOT raised this issue so early in the process. And with the traffic study they've done, we know exactly what percentage of trips they're contributing to the existing traffic level at Elm and 395. We know they're contributing basically exactly 2% more trips over what's there now. So you would look at, you know, what's the, what's the potential cost of rebuilding that, and then you would take 2% of that cost, and that becomes what the developer's share is. So in this case, that winds up being about $200,000.
Okay, so the fee will only be coming from the developers, and then it'll be set aside?
And it's set aside, and the city holds it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to commend the staff. This seems a long project coming, and especially having the difficult conversations with ODOT. When I looked at this agenda item and looked at the possibilities that can come from a project like this, I was honestly really excited, but also thought for a bit of the traffic impacts that could happen. And honestly, I had other people that noted that as well. So I'm, I'm really happy that we had our engineers that are on that, that provided a good outlook, something that ODOT found agreeable. And I think it's important not to compromise our, I guess, the sovereignty of what we want to build, how we want to build it. And so I commend the city staff for working with those agencies to make sure that we have control over what we want to build in our city.
All right, go ahead, Council Duran.
Yeah, I really want to commend the staff because not only are we interested in the growth, but we also can't overlook the safety of what that growth means to, to our residents. So thank you for working very closely with ODOT and making sure that plans are in place for this future growth. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. All right, perfect. Then we'll move on to findings of fact. Planning Director Clint Spencer.
You have seven pages of findings that were attached to your staff report. They were prepared by the applicant's representative rather than staff this time, but they addressed the relevant criteria, both in the comprehensive plan and the statewide planning goals, and we find them satisfactory and recommended option by the council.
Perfect. On, on that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Linton, second by Council Barone. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Now we move on to ordinances and resolutions. 10A, ordinance number 2372, zoning map amendment for N 2811 AD, Tax Lot 100, the Hub Hermiston LLC, 963 East Diagonal Boulevard. City Manager, Byron Smith.
Ditto to what Clint said.
Perfect. Excellent, excellent delivered. Any council questions on this ordinance? Any public comment? Any council comments? All right, then, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I turned away.
I just want to say I'm excited to, to see the possibility of having market-rate apartments in, in Hermiston. I think we have a shortage, and I'm excited to, to see this as part of the process to facilitate that.
As a fairly recent apartment mover, ditto.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so any other council comments? All right, then I'll entertain, sorry, excuse me. Council President then requests the first reading of the ordinance read by title only and calls for a roll call.
Mr. Robert.
Yes.
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 All right, so first reading by title only of ordinance number 2372, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston zoning map to include the neighborhood commercial overlay for a 3.71 acre tract located west of Northeast 10th Street and north of East Diagonal Boulevard.
Excellent. Council President requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting, and that the second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 City Attorney Tovey.
Second reading by title only of ordinance number 2372, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston zoning map to include the neighborhood commercial overlay for a 3.71 acre tract located west of Northeast 10th Street and north of East Diagonal Boulevard.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that ordinance number 2372 be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the city council?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Duran, second by Council Roberts. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, item B, Resolution 2381, Development Incentive Agreement with the Hub Hermiston LLC. City Manager, Smith.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Council President, Mayor of the Council, this evening we're asking you to approve Resolution 2381, which is, involves an incentive package related to the action that you just took. There we go. High-level summary, this is an incentive package for 276 apart, market-rate apartment units, the total cost of which comes out to approximately $1.3 million, which would be paid over the course of five years. Important to keep in mind, this is equal to about 66% of the local property taxes that we anticipate to be paid over that time period. Also, very important to keep in mind that this package should not be considered to be a tax cut or a tax break, because they will end up paying all of their property taxes. So all of the underlying taxing jurisdictions will receive their tax revenue as normal. This is simply a incentive package from the city of Hermiston that's tied to the amount of tax that they're paying. But they will be paying all of their property tax to all the underlying jurisdictions, the school district, the fire district, the community college, all those other entities are held whole through this process. So to kind of give you a little bit of idea of the concept, we have an apartment complex. Those little icons down there on the side, you know, those represent some of the other taxing jurisdictions, just some of them. So you have like the fire district, the school district, the mosquito control district, the city. So you have the apartment complex that is developed. You have the county assessor's office, which receives tax revenues. So in this agreement, the development will still pay all of their property tax to the county assessor's office. The county assessor's office will then distribute all of the revenue to the underlying jurisdictions as normal. So again, the mosquito control district, the school district, the fire district, they'll all receive their tax revenues as though this agreement never existed. What will then happen is the city, we then, when the developer comes back to us every year and shows how much they actually paid in local property tax, then the city will give them cash in an amount equal to a certain percentage of how much they paid in tax, depending on what year we are through the cycle. So I would consider this to be something kind of like a carrot and a stick incentive, or it's a disappearing incentive over time. So the city will be paying a certain percentage of the tax bill that they actually paid through 2031, but the percentage of that amount will decline over time. So for tax year 2026, so that would be property taxes due November of 2026, so about a year and a half from now, the city is saying, whatever your tax bill is that year, we'll pay 100% of that. Same thing in 2027. And then, again, to incentivize more rapid development, we've front-loaded this incentive so that you're, you'd get 100% of the tax bill those first two years. In 2028, it drops to 75%. And then in '29 and '30, we're only going to be covering half of what their property tax bill is, and in 2031, we'll cover a quarter, and then after that, the incentive is gone. So first off, you know, why apartments? I'm sure that's a question that you will receive quite a bit out in the community, so I wanted to kind of do a, a deep dive. And we've talked about this quite a bit with council over the past number of years as to why apartments are important for the community. But again, why apartments? Really, it's all about establishing what I would consider to be a community development pipeline in the, in, in the community into the future. So important to keep in mind the realities that we face as a community when it comes to housing. Generally speaking, Hermiston has no problem at all attracting development, investment, in constructing detached, single-family homes, you know, your typical, single-family home. For the past five years, we've averaged 108 of those units every single year. And I just checked, and through the end of June of this year, we've issued 54 permits for single-family homes. So we're right on track through the first six months to, again, hit 108 single-family homes built in 2025. Additionally, we frankly have no problem seeing income-restricted rental units developed. Since 2019, we've seen construction of about 28 units per year. So really, in the past five years, we've seen, you know, 550 single-family homes built, you know, a couple hundred income-restricted rental units. But in the past 10-plus, frankly, years, we've had exactly zero apartment rate, market-rate apartment units constructed. So some real challenges occur there. So the reason, the best that we can understand them, from talking with many different apartment developers of the years, biggest challenge for getting folks to build apartments in Hermiston is not that they can't make money in Hermiston, it's that they can make more profit elsewhere. So I think it's, a lot of folks think, well, Hermiston, smaller town, maybe it's more affordable to build here. That really only pertains to, you know, one component of the overall cost of development, and that would be, you know, the real estate, you know, the actual dirt where they're building these might be a little more affordable if you're purchasing land in Hermiston versus, you know, Portland or Hillsborough or somewhere over there. But really, all the other costs are going to be very similar, you know. You're building 270, you know, apartment units. The lumber to frame that thing is going to be the same in Hermiston, or if you're in Portland or Hillsborough. You know, you're buying 270 refrigerators and 270, you know, AC units and 270 countertops, you know. Those costs are all the same, whether you're in Hermiston or if you're in Portland. So, so really, you know, it may be marginally more affordable to build in Hermiston, but then when you look at the other side of the ledger and you look at the rental revenue that they could receive, you know, if they can, if it's only, you know, maybe 3% less expensive to build in Hermiston, but maybe it's 20% higher rents that they can charge in Portland, on balance, it still makes sense for them to build and put their investment, energy, and effort into places like Portland or Bend or Tri-Cities. Even if it is slightly more expensive to build there, that's why, and that's really the frustrating position for us to be in is to have, you know, folks tell us, yeah, you do need apartments, and yeah, we probably could, you know, make a go of it in Hermiston. We can just, you know, put our resources elsewhere. And so you can't fault them for doing those. So again, why is this important for Hermiston as a community? I like to kind of walk folks through this, you know, hypothetical scenario of a, a potential new resident coming into the community. So think, you know, about a 22, 23-year-old, recent college graduate. Maybe they get a job, you know, hired as a new teacher at the Hermiston School District. You know, they're single, they don't have any dependents, and you know, as a first-year starting teacher, they're making $50,000 a year in salary. So they show up and they're looking for a place to live, you know, they probably have a whole bunch of student debt, so they're thinking- So they show up and they're looking for a place to live, you know, they probably have a whole bunch of student debt, so they're thinking, you know, that, they, they feel like they're low income. Uh, but when you look at the um, subsidized apartment restrictions, they're just looking at income and if you have no dependents. You know, they, they frankly earn too much to qualify uh, as low income. So all of the, the subsidized apartment complexes are not an option for somebody in that type of a situation. Even if they do have a whole bunch of student debt, uh, because debt isn't taken into consideration, it's really just your income. And so uh, subsidized apartments are not really an option for those types of working adults in the community. Uh, so then, you know, as a community, we're offering up, well, we have a whole lot of, you know, homes that are being constructed, why don't you just buy a house? Uh, but I kind of consider that like we're proposing marriage on the first date. Um, you know, you may have somebody who's coming to Hermiston, they got a job, you know, maybe they're from Gresham or Hillsborough or wherever. And they just happened to come to Hermiston because they got a job here. Um, but they don't really have any other roots, you know, tied to the community, um, and you know, frankly, they may move in a few years. Um, as you know, they're early in their, their young adult lives and you know, it makes all sorts of sense maybe that they will move. And so uh, they really, and if you're only going to be staying in a place for two or three years. Um, you probably will lose money buying and selling a house if you only have a couple of years in it, because there are costs associated with buying a house. So, you know, if all we have available for folks is to buy a house, um, it's really uh, discouraging for folks. And then you add on top of that, you know, if they have a whole bunch of student loan debt, they probably don't have the capital to, to make a down payment uh, at this point anyway. So then they start looking at the rental market, uh, which is uh, extremely constricted. And so, you know, they're looking around, you know, maybe they could rent a house, uh, they'd probably have to find some roommates. You know, they're going to be paying upwards of eighteen hundred, maybe two thousand dollars a month. Um, so then they start to look around in Tri-Cities. And they realize, you know, they can probably rent something uh, for a roughly comparable rate. Um, in the Tri-Cities, maybe a little bit more, uh, but at the end of the day, there's just frankly more amenities in the Tri-Cities, you know, for somebody in their twenties. You know, restaurants, shopping, and frankly, one of the largest amenities, I think, for that demographic is the dating pool. Uh, and, and that really is a, a realistic consideration, I think, for a lot of folks when they're looking. And so if they're trying to balance apples and apples, um, and they see that the, the rent is roughly the same. You know, they might just choose to, to rent in Kennewick and just commute down every day. So uh, the community loss from that person choosing to live in Tri-Cities and, and commute down. You know, they're again, starting their adult life, you know, so they're going to start, you know, they're going to buy a new car, they're going to buy it from a Curly rather than Charles Chevrolet in town. They're going to get all their oil changes and new tires and buy insurance from a local agent up there, they're going to eat at the restaurants in Tri-Cities, they're going to go. You know, spend, do all these things in the Tri-Cities rather than do them uh, in Hermiston. So that's one of the kind of immediate community loss aspects from somebody choosing to live in Tri-Cities rather than Hermiston. You know, longer term though, again, when we think about that person, you know, early on, um, in their adult life. You know, eventually they're going to meet a significant other in that larger dating pool. Uh, and so probably that person, if they're living in Tri-Cities, that other person probably also works in Tri-Cities. So then, you know, they're starting to form bonds in a community, they're starting to put down roots slightly in a community. And so, you know, eventually they're going to get married and they're probably going to just buy a house in Tri-Cities, uh, since they both have ties up there. Eventually, they're going to start having kids and that's going to make it a lot harder to justify that commute down every single day. Um, when they got to go pick the kids up from daycare and do all these things. So eventually, they're going to end up just quitting their job in Hermiston because they can easily get a job in Tri-Cities. And now we've completely lost, you know, not just that person, but that entire household. Because I think if we would think about, you know, that same person who showed up at twenty-two years old, um, if all those things had happened in Hermiston. You know, now you may have a, a couple, you know, maybe they're both teachers. You know, ten years in, you know, that couple now is a household earning a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Which in Hermiston is pretty significant, uh, and good, good dollars uh, to be circulating inside of the community. So that's really what we're, what we're losing long term in terms of investment in the community. If we don't provide an on-ramp into the community for folks when they, when they come here to work. Uh, so just some more, you know, numbers in terms of the long-term economic loss that we're looking at. You know, I think this year in particular, a lot of folks have uh, kind of become uh, amateur economists and learning about import, export, you know, trade policy and those types of things. And so, you know, you can have a trade deficit, you know, in any type of market, you know, it doesn't have to be an international market, it can be a local market and any type of. You know, market, including the labor market. So I think a, a lot of times, I think a lot about the, the labor market loss that we experience or the trade imbalance that we have. With the Tri-Cities. So this is a map from the US Census Bureau's on the map tool. Um, I've used it quite a bit in the past, the latest data that they have is from twenty twenty-two, so that's what's showing here. What you're looking at there, the orange outline is a map of the Hermiston nine, seven, eight, three, eight zip code. And so those arrows that are included on there represent jobs in the Hermiston zip code, well, jobs and workers. So the circular arrow there, that is representing uh, the number of people. Who both live and work inside of the nine, seven, eight, three, eight zip code. The arrow heading off to the right, that is showing the number of people who live in the nine, seven, eight, three, eight zip code. But commute out to a job somewhere else outside of the zip code. And then the arrow on the left-hand side, that's representing workers who live somewhere else. But commute into the nine, seven, eight, three, eight zip code. So when we look at that, uh, what we can see is that our immediate Hermiston economy. Imports a significant amount of our labor uh, to fill our jobs in the Hermiston uh, Hermiston community. So uh, when we look at the numbers then, just specific to the Tri-Cities. So that was talking about, you know, when we see, we're importing almost two thousand people a day coming into the nine, seven, eight, three, eight zip code to work jobs. Uh, in our zip code, a lot of those are coming in from just say, Umatilla or Stanfield or Irrigan. So a lot of that is coming in from what I would still kind of consider to be our, more or less our local housing market. Um, but when I just look at uh, the Tri-Cities is the one that I really like to focus on. When we look at these tables, they look very similar, but they're showing uh, two different things. The one on the left-hand side there is showing where uh, people who work jobs inside of the Hermiston zip code. Where they live. And on the right-hand side, that is showing workers who live in the Hermiston zip code, where they work. So we can zero in on just Benton and Franklin Counties in Washington. And so you can see that um, on a daily basis, our zip code imports almost thirteen hundred people down from the Tri-Cities. And on the reverse flow, we export about seven hundred people a day up to the Tri-Cities. So that means on net, we're importing almost six hundred people every single day coming down to work jobs in the Hermiston zip code. So that, you know, you can look at that a couple of ways, you know, on the one hand, that would say, hey, our local economy is doing so good at adding jobs. That we have to import people to come into the community to work those jobs. Um, but if we're importing labor, then that means we're exporting their wages out of the community. So uh, that's where the balance piece comes in. So trying to get an idea of, you know, what does that actually mean to the community on an annual basis? Uh, all that I did here was you just look at the net number of uh, workers that were importing from the Tri-Cities. At five eighty-five, and then you look at Umatilla County's average wage, so that's for all jobs. Uh, whether they're part-time, full-time, you know, minimum wage, all those, you know, the average wage. Uh, not just, that's not like a household income, that's every single job, that's the average. So if you took five eighty-five times that average wage, that means that generally speaking, I think we can estimate that flying in the coop out of Hermiston to the Tri-Cities. Every single year, we're exporting almost twenty-four million dollars a year in Hermiston wages, uh, up to support restaurants and business and things in, in the Tri-Cities. Uh, because we don't have housing for them here. So uh, looking at the fiscal information now, you know, how are we going to pay for this, uh, and where's the money coming from, where's it going to go? So again, in summary, all of the underlying taxing jurisdictions will still get their uh, tax revenue as normal. Um, as though this agreement didn't exist. Um, this is just the city choosing to use some of our resources to essentially reimburse the developer for their property tax bill. So the developer will receive approximately one point three million dollars uh, over the course of five years. And I say approximately, uh, and because I'll get into this in a little bit, uh, but there's a number of uh, very significant assumptions that these estimates are based on. Uh, so it's really probably more of a, a range of somewhere between one point one and one point five million dollars. Uh, but the midpoint of that estimate is based on the actual assumptions that I'll present to you. Uh, so I have the highest confidence that uh, the data is going to be the total cost of the, of the incentive. Uh, first off though, uh, one point three million dollars sounds like a lot of money. And for, you know, a lot of us personally, that is a lot of money. Uh, and so it's tough to wrap our heads around, you know, you know, how does that make any sense, you know, what is this actually purchasing? So uh, it's also challenging, I think, for us to wrap our heads around truly what is two hundred and seventy-six apartment units, what does that actually mean? Um, I think just for general reference, if you used our average number of people per household in Hermiston and you took that across two hundred and seventy-six units. This is basically like adding more people than live in the entire city of Echo currently. So I mean, you got to keep in mind, that's really what we're talking about here. So you divide one point three million dollars by two hundred and seventy-six units and it breaks out to a much more realistic or digestible number. At four, forty-seven hundred dollars per housing unit, it ultimately is what this uh, works its way out to. Also checking, you know, what's the, the market? You know, one of the council's goals for this year was to um, study um, incentive programs and, and alternatives. For attracting market rate rental housing. Uh, and I just came back from the Oregon City Managers Association uh, conference and I can tell you, uh, there is no best practice out there. Uh, everybody's struggling with this, it's all over the board. Um, but so when we look at really kind of what is the market and what are some of the things that are similar to what we're doing? Um, I think a lot of folks probably remember that as far back as two thousand and twelve. Um, I can remember Moro County has been offering just flat out five thousand dollar per home. Uh, cash incentives, if you just buy any home in Moro County, uh, they would give you five thousand dollars. And that was in two thousand and twelve, you know, that's inflated now to a little over seven thousand dollars. So we're definitely in the market, you know, from that standpoint with that program. Uh, additionally, one that just came across here a couple of months ago. Uh, it was a little startling to see that our neighbors further off to the west, uh, in Gillum County. Uh, they're investing about one point four million dollars of taxpayer funds, uh, in what they're calling a workforce housing project. Uh, but that's to develop just twelve uh, buildable lots. Uh, so that's a, a taxpayer subsidy of a hundred and four thousand dollars per unit. So uh, for, from a sanity check standpoint, looking at the market, you know, forty-seven hundred dollars a unit is uh, very uh, affordable in my opinion. So the cost estimate details, um, you know, I, I'm not sure of many things in this world, but I'm very confident. That the total cost of this uh, package will not come out to exactly one million, three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Um, but that is the estimate, uh, like I said, it's going to be a range. But so how did we get to that uh, that exact number? Uh, first off, we had to, there's really two main large variables, we had to estimate what we think the taxable value is going to be. Uh, and then we had to, you know, put our finger in the air and kind of guess at what the construction timing is going to be. Because that's going to drive how much uh, property tax actually gets paid. And that's where we get to this range of one point one to one point five million. So uh, the first assumption, taxable value, so we looked around at the actual taxes paid. Uh, from comparable uh, market rate rental properties in Hermiston. Uh, to come up with a per unit estimate on uh, rental units for what the property owners pay in property tax based on those rental units. And then we scaled that up by two hundred and seventy-six units, and so that gave us the total estimated annual property tax bill of about five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year. But that five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, that's at uh, full occupancy, uh, or at full buildout of the project. Uh, now we know, uh, with construction projects, you know, the, a lot of these large, you know, construction projects is probably going to be well over fifty million dollar project. You know, they take time and here we sit uh, in the middle of twenty twenty-five, uh, only six months away from twenty twenty-six. And so uh, I think we feel pretty confident that, you know, we're only going to see maybe a very, very small amount of taxable value hit the rolls. Uh, before the end of this calendar year. So uh, important to understand how the property tax system works on these types of things. And so the, the tax assessor, they look at uh, value that is taxable. Uh, you know, constructed, received a certificate of occupancy, uh, by the end of the calendar year, uh, or by January first. And whatever that value is, that is what goes on to the, the tax bill that somebody would owe in November of that next year. So when we look at this table, table two, that was included in your staff report. And we're showing that we estimate the total value that will be on the rolls in twenty twenty-six. That is saying that we estimate that by December thirty-first of this year of twenty twenty-five. Maybe five percent of the total project will have been constructed and, and be taxable. Um, and so then by uh, what we're showing there is twenty twenty-seven, uh, you know, maybe by the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, maybe half the project, maybe around forty percent will be constructed. And then by twenty twenty-eight, we're assuming ninety percent, and then by twenty twenty-nine, it'll be, you know, fully constructed. So we have to make some estimates as to how quickly this project is going to be built out. And that uh, directly results in how much they owe in property tax. So uh, in this scenario, uh, if we said, you know, or I guess uh, if the total taxable values are on uh, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If half of that is taxable by the end of twenty twenty-six, uh, then the tax owed uh, would be half of that, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So uh, that table shows the estimated value that'll be on the rolls over the next uh, five or six years. That then rolls into the estimate of the total taxes paid. So the total estimated annual tax has to be, you know, taken in conjunction with that estimated timeline. So we're assuming at full buildout, it's going to be five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. But if we're only assuming five percent is complete by tax year twenty twenty-six, then their actual tax bill is only going to be twenty-eight thousand dollars. So and then it, you know, ramps up as more of it becomes taxable. And again, keep in mind that, you know, all of those revenues will get distributed to the underlying districts, we're just reimbursing the developer for a portion of those. Also important to keep in mind, um, table four in your staff report. Uh, shows that, again, they're paying all their property tax and the city itself is a major recipient of local property tax revenues. So uh, out of, you know, say in twenty twenty-nine in this slide where it's, you know, at that full five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Twenty-nine percent of that is going to be coming right to the city's uh, general fund. So in twenty twenty-nine, in that scenario, the city's property tax revenues would be about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars just attributed. Uh, to the revenues from this project. So I think that's important to keep track of when we talk about how we're going to cover the costs of this. So then we have to come up with, well, how much would we actually owe to the developer under this scenario? Now, remember table one at the very beginning, you know, that showed where we have this declining incentive. Where in years twenty-six and twenty-seven, we're going to pay a hundred percent of their property tax bill. In twenty-eight, it's seventy-five percent and fifty percent, fifty percent and twenty-five percent. So we take the total amount that they, we think that they're going to owe each year and run that across the percentage of what we say that we're going to pay. And that's how we come up with how much we project we will owe the developer in each one of those years. So when we look at the uh, final tally. Uh, what I would consider revenue that they will end up paying in property tax to the city will be about seven hundred and three thousand dollars. So we would recommend that this be paid for, uh, that portion be paid for out of general fund revenues from that source. And then the remaining six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars would come from other city resources, we would recommend from the city's enterprise zone fund. Uh, so the total cost to be paid to the developer of the course of this agreement comes out to that one point three million dollars. Uh, finally, just a couple notes on uh, liability and strategy. Uh, I think probably the biggest liability or question that, you know, may be out there is, okay, well, what happens if, you know, they come out and they turn out to be the fastest developers in the world? And, you know, they build this whole thing and it all becomes taxable, you know, before the end of this calendar year. Uh, you know, that would probably be like the, the worst case scenario from a financial liability standpoint, you know, what happens in that scenario? Uh, but again, you got to keep in mind, that means that the property taxes that they will pay will follow suit. You know, that just means that they'll pay a hundred percent of, you know, what their property tax bill was that year. But keeping in mind, the city is going to get, you know, almost a third of that ourselves. So the portion that will get to offset this would follow that. So really, our, our liability would only increase uh, by about seventy-one percent in that scenario. So um, so I think that's important to keep in mind. But again, I, I feel pretty good about our projection of a realistic timeline. You know, maybe they'll go a little bit faster or a little bit slower, uh, but I think generally, uh, we're in a good, a good range. And then finally, last piece on, on strategy, because I think, uh, you know, another question that you may get is, you know, if the city were outlaying one point three million dollars. You know, some people are going to ask, you know, didn't you require, you know, affordability, you know, didn't you require that they don't, you know, charge ten million dollars a, a unit? Or something like that. You know, I think it's important for us not to include uh, any price controls. Like I mentioned earlier, uh, we have no challenge or problem with attracting um, income restricted and, and restricted housing units in the community. Um, but I think the structure of this incentive, you know, kind of functions to incentivize them or the developer. Uh, to keep their rents, you know, affordable in the terms that they're, you know, as close to the market as possible. And frankly, hopefully, kind of flatten out the market. So uh, because that incentive percentage that we're going to be paying declines over time. Uh, we're hoping that we incentivize them to build as many units as quickly as they can. And so if we're bringing on more capacity, as much as we can, as quickly as we can. Again, the hope is that that kind of dilutes the rental market to a certain extent and at least blunts some of the rise in, in rents across the community. Uh, so it kind of acts as its own price control. Uh, so uh, you know, the other way of looking at it is, you know, if, if they were to be slower at building, you know, maybe they're kind of trying to set the market. And, you know, set up a price point that, you know, they're hoping maybe uh, they could get. set up a price point that, you know, they're hoping maybe they could get, you know, then that means they may be sitting on some units that just sit vacant and, and aren't rented. And so in that instance, then they're still going to be paying property tax on that, but they're not going to be receiving any income for it. So, and if they build slower, then they'll be getting less incentive. So that's ultimately why we have it structured that way. So with that, I went a deep dive into a lot of different topics, but I'd stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Does the council have any questions on resolution 2381?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. We are giving them, the developers, money, we're going to pay them money. I think it's at 66% for them to build apartments that they're going to rent out and for the next five years. My problem is in the past, we've said we don't have money for this, so we have to do a fee to help out the police department. We say we don't have money for other things and then we have to do the business license in order to bring in income. So I'm having a problem with taking property tax money that's coming in from other areas and paying developers to build apartment complex even though we need apartment complex. And as you were saying that we have no problem in having developers come in to build. And I don't understand why they can't build the apartments and then just make their money off the rental of these apartments and pay property tax. I don't see why we're paying them money for the next five years. I guess after five years they'll pay the full amount, that's what I'm thinking. But we're, we are starting off at, I don't know, table one says 100%. So I'm not exactly sure where we start off, maybe 5%. They pay 5% and then we pay the other 95 until we go all the way up to where we pay 100% for three years. I'll say 90% up to 100% for four years. Is that correct?
Yeah, so all of those numbers are included in the staff report and the various tables. And so probably this table is the one that summarizes everything the most. So this is what will actually get paid to the developer. So again, we're paying 100% of their property tax bill in 2026. And so we're estimating that their total property tax bill that they will owe in 2026 is only going to be $28,000 based on how quickly we anticipate that they'll, they'll build out. So all of those numbers, you know, play together, but that's how.
Well, where's this money coming from? Because other times we don't have money for different things and now all of a sudden we have money to pay, uh, uh, business people?
Yeah, so again, on this slide, out of the total cost that we estimate going out the door over the course of those five years, almost two thirds of that would be coming directly from this project itself. So they're still going to pay all of their property taxes normal. That flows back to the city and all the other jurisdictions. The city's portion of that, we estimate over the course of five years will be about $700,000. So we're just saying we'll choose to send that right back to, to the developers. So funds that were not associated with coming from this project itself form about 40% of that.
Well, can you still tell me exactly where we're getting this money from when in the past we're talking about, we don't have the money and, and we are doing fees to people, business fees, police department fees, we can't give money to, uh, uh, other like, um, chamber needs extra money, Harkin Rider needs extra money. So where's this money coming from, please?
From the enterprise zone.
From where?
The enterprise zone.
Oh, so the money's coming out of enterprise zones to pay. Okay, thank you.
Any other council questions? Any public comment? Any council comments on resolution 2381? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, and I want to commend the city again, a lot of work that you guys have put into these type of projects and talking to different agencies and in this, in this respect, you know, incentivizing a developer to, you know, build the first market rate housing in the last 10 years. And so, you know, in the, in the past, there's been a lot of people that have approached me in the community asking me, what is the city doing? What is the city doing to build more houses? We need more housing here. And so I know that we've done other things in the past, like building the, the infrastructure and, and having shovel ready properties. But it's also great to hear that, you know, we're diversifying and finding other ways to incentivize developers to keep wanting to continue coming here. And so I've, I've seen their work that they've done in the Westgate Apartments. The apartments look really, really nice. And I appreciate just even painting a picture of, of kind of what the situation in Hermiston looks like for a lot of people here too. I know that you painted a picture for educators, but it's the same way for, you know, Amazon workers, people coming into our community, you know, looking to, to establish themselves. And so oftentimes there's a lot of people that do end up going to Tri-Cities and I think that resonates. That resonated really, uh, really hard with me. So I, I know for, for me, that, that rings true. And so I'm really happy that we're doing something about this and I can see that within the, within five years, this is an investment as, as how I see it. We will continue getting the property tax revenue from these property taxes. Everyone is still going to get their property tax revenue, but we will have more people coming to our community and enjoying the amenities and, and paying property taxes to also, you know, support the development of the city. So thank you again to the staff. Really appreciate the work that you guys put into this.
I also want to say thank you, just in the initiative, of course, kind of echoing a Council Brown's words on developing additional incentives. I know we've talked at length about how difficult it can be to try to incentivize because the city doesn't build apartments or houses or places to live. We can just kind of incentivize and it's, we've had to be inventive. So I applaud the city for that and for being so detailed in your report as to how these funds will be represented in that incentive. That's all the comments that I have. Are there any further council comments? Go ahead, Council Roberts.
As I sit and listen to the presentation and I look at the numbers, they are big numbers. But what sticks out at me is number one, we have struggled to have market rate rentals. I've had family who recently moved to Hermiston and they were in that very spot where they ended up buying a house because they couldn't find a rental. And that worked out well for them, but not everybody's in that boat. And the, the reality in my mind is if we don't incentivize the building, then the building is not going to happen. It's going to cause developers to go other places and build somewhere else. I was looking at the tax revenue for this specific lot as we sit here. In 2021, the amount of tax owed was $3,361 for that land. Now it's gone up. I'm, I'm not sure if they've done some work in there. 2024 was about $14,000 due for, for all taxes sent over to the county. And so that's all we're going to get if we don't incentivize building. And that's, I think, what we're talking about here is trying to get these places to build, trying to get these places to open up homes in our communities so we can invite people in. This falls right in line with our goals as far as I'm concerned. So thank you to city staff, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Kelso?
I wanted to thank city staff as well for their foresight and, and recognizing that this is an investment in building our community. It does seem like a lot of money, but I do have personal experience. When I moved here over eight years ago, there was one apartment complex that I qualified to move into, a market rate place, and I was on a waiting list. I was worried I was going to have to move to Tri-Cities. I already owned a house in the Portland area. I wasn't looking to buy a second house here just yet. I wasn't ready to move my, the rest of my family over here, but I thought I was going to have to commute from Tri-Cities every day just to have the job that I have in Hermiston. So, and, and the fact that that situation hasn't improved at all in the last 10 years is, it kind of blows me away. So I'm really glad that we have this opportunity. I think this is a great location for, for apartments. It doesn't directly go up next against single family houses. I mean, there's roads separating everybody, which is nice. It's a perfect area, I think. And I think, and I commend the city again for their foresight in, in proposing this investment in our community's growth. I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Any further council comments? Well, I'll let Counselor Duron go first.
I think you described some of my kids to the T as far as, you know, being able to afford and trying to be independent from, from me. And I think in some of the discussions that we've had, even with our planning of 2040, the building of apartments is something that has come up time and time again. I think it seems, it sounds very absurd to have to pay someone, but the return on investment is, is higher. And I think that we don't also want someone to say, this is what we're going to do and then have the land sit around and not be developed, you know, in a timely manner. I think this allows for the developer to be able to get the job done and it's being incentivized. So I really do appreciate all the different scenarios that you took us through to be able to see all of the different charts that you created so that we can have a better understanding. This is something that you do on a daily basis. You can come up with all these numbers. This is something that is not, or even for those that are tuning in on YouTube, don't understand why we do, why the city does the things that they do or how it brings new apartments or new developers into the community. So I think this really explains it real well and I would hope that if this is passed, I don't know how it's going to go in the voting, but, but I believe that if also as part of the education process, if something like this can also be posted so that people that have questions, maybe while they're able to see the reports and all of these things, I think hopefully if they have any questions, that'll drive them to you so you can answer them. Or, you know, they can come to our, to our meetings if they have any concerns. But I really appreciate how wholesome it is and how it gives us better information to be making informed decisions. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any, any additional council comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it, Counsel Linton.
My first question is, has any other developers been incentivized to build here in Hermiston?
We've tried over many years and again, it was the, the same issue that I mentioned earlier where they've, you know, we've offered various incentives for apartment developments and the exact answer that they give us is, yeah, I would like to build there, but if I'm going to be directing my investments places, I return if I'm building in Portland or Bend or, or Tri-Cities right now, just because they could get higher rents when the costs are the same. So, so we've tried many times with many different developers over the past 10 years, so.
And the others, the towns that you're mentioning, they're also have a higher population, so they would definitely make more money. That would be standard with any business being built here or elsewhere. My other question is, can you or the city manager guarantee that there won't be any fees placed on the residents of Hermiston because of this money going out to, out of our zones or accounts or balance?
Yeah, I can't guarantee anything in that way because I don't know what could come. You know, if a pandemic comes next year, lots of things have to happen. But from their development, I don't foresee any reason that we would have to increase any fees or anything because they will be paying property taxes just like every other property in the city and they'll be paying the law enforcement staffing fee, all the things that, that everybody else pays. So I don't foresee any need for an increase. I can't guarantee anything in those, in that scenario.
Those would all be fees if, even if they did occur, council would have to pass if we introduced them in a new fee schedule.
I just have one more comment. I want to say I appreciate Counsel Linton's question about where the funding is coming from. That was a question that I had myself and I, I think it's great to know that it's coming from the appropriate accounts, the capital or any capital improvements or things of that nature. We as a council have talked about the enterprise zones should be used for capital projects or improvements. And so I think this is a very appropriate use of those funds and excited that we have those funds that need, like that the enterprise zone funds aren't generated from individual taxpayers and it's more from the, the businesses that we have here like Amazon and Lamb Weston. So I think it's a great use of the funds.
Any other council comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2381 and lay it upon the record.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'll go with Counselor Kelso for the motion. Second, Counselor Roberts, roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Counselor Linton in opposition. Moving on to item 10C, ordinance number 2373, amends the city's annexation procedures in chapter 150 to reflect streamlined annexation procedures in R S 222 dot 125. City Manager Byron Smith.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, thank you. Basically, under state statute, there are two standard procedures for annexation. When you have consent of a property owner, you can go through a hearings process or through a citywide elections process where the, where an annexation will be put forth to the voters. And the city historically has opted to use the hearings process where we do a public hearing in front of the planning commission on the land use compatibility of the annexation and then a hearing in front of the city council on the annexation itself. And we have codified that hearing process in chapter 150 of our code of ordinances, which governs annexations. I was recently working on writing some findings for an annexation and then triple checking as one does, my findings to make sure all of my statutory sites were correct. And we found a little used paragraph in the statutes which allows for cities to dispense with the hearings process when you have an annexation proposed where you have 100% of landowners petitioning for annexation and 50% of the electors. That would be the residents in the area being proposed for annexation, consenting to annexation. Then you can dispense with the hearings and simply pass an ordinance saying that the land is annexed to the city. This is a very streamlined process over our current process and offers a lot of benefits for prospective residents of the city. Almost all of the annexations we do are either single lot annexations for a development or an emergency annexation of a single lot for a failed septic connection to sewer. And in all of those cases, we always have 100% owner consent. And usually if the land is bare, there are no electors. If it's a septic emergency, the, the electors are the ones petitioning for annexation. So we see this little used provision as an opportunity to save about 90 days of process and about $2,000 for people who are petitioning to annex between our annexation fees and public hearing costs. It still wouldn't apply for areas that are already inhabited where you can't get the owner consent or where there are large conglomerations petitioning for annexation. But it gives you the opportunity to just streamline the process. But in order to take advantage of this statutorily permitted process, we have to amend our ordinance because right now our ordinance does mandate those two hearings. And so that's what this ordinance amendment is before you tonight.
Thank you. And are there any council questions on this ordinance? Go ahead, Counselor Kelso.
You indicated that this is a, a little used clause. Is there a reason for that? It seems like other cities may have discovered that. It seems like other cities may have discovered this before us.
Oh, I have no idea if other cities are using it or not. I just mean, we had never noticed it.
Okay.
But it had been in the statutes for a long time.
Has our city, city attorney taken a look at it and given the blessing or whatever?
Mr. Spencer and I have been working on this together, and, uh, as, just going through and reviewing other cities, looking at how cities have used this, uh, O R S, uh, there, there definitely are other cities that have had this in their code.
Okay.
And, and they have it worked in, um, I mean, every code is a little bit different, but, uh, but it is in other codes.
Okay, that's good. When he said little-used, I didn't know if that meant statewide or, and we're blazing dangerous territory.
Oh, no, no.
Or what?
I just mean, it's, it's that big when you're scrolling through there and
Okay.
we had not previously noticed it.
All right, well, thank you.
Councilor Roberts.
I have the same question. Why is it not being used? And I'm, I like to hear pros and cons, so I'm hearing the pros of this. What are the cons of, of this process?
The cons would be if the city council sees a lot of value in always holding a hearing, then that would be your con. You are losing that because people can't elect to use this streamlined procedure.
Any other council questions?
Okay. But even, even, you know, there may not be a public hearing under those terms. When you're adopting an annexation ordinance, there would still be the opportunity for the public to come comment on the annexa, on the annexation ordinance. It wouldn't be an official public hearing, but still an opportunity for them to express a concern if they had one, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And would the council still have final say in?
Correct.
Okay, in the adoption or not?
Any other council questions? Any public comment? Any council comments?
Yeah, one.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it. Sorry, I thought you were pointing over here. Go ahead, Councilor Roberts.
Um, so yeah, that was one of my, my concerns was the public, because I know we had that incident up on, uh, Southeast Tenth Street, uh, with an annexation, and we had several people from the public coming in opposed to that at the public hearing. And so that's one of my main concerns is making sure that if the electors do have a problem, they have a process for which to, to voice those concerns to the council, and so it sounds like that's, um, allowed, and so I, I think I'm.
As clarification also, for example, with the seven, with the Southeast Tenth Street one, that was not only an annexation, that was also a comp plan amendment where we were changing. And so anytime, we would only be able to use this process for lands that already have a city zone and are adjacent to city limits. So when we have to do a zone change prior to annexation, we still have to do those hearings, and we wouldn't dispense with the annexation portion of it. We'd just always hold one hearing. That's what really why I see this mostly as benefiting the, uh, septics.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments, excuse me? All right, in that case, Council President requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting, and, sorry. Council President requests first reading of the ordinance be read by title only and calls for a roll call.
Yes.
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 City Attorney Tubby.
Thank you. First reading, uh, by title only of ordinance number two-three-seven-three and ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the Hermiston Municipal Code relating to annexation.
Thank you, City Attorney Tubby. Council, uh, roll call. We already did, sorry. Brain went backwards because I missed it the first time. Council President requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that the second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call.
Yes.
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 City Attorney Tubby.
Second reading by title only of ordinance number two-three-seven-three and ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the Hermiston Municipal Code relating to annexation.
I'll entertain a motion that ordinance number twenty-three seventy-three be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Kelso, second by Counselor Duran. Roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five-one, Counselor Linton in, um, objection. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item eleven A, July twenty-twenty-five, council goal update, City Manager Smith.
Yes, uh, Mr. Council President, um, members of the council, um, I'm just gonna, it was included in your packet of spreadsheet with all of our current goals, and I'm just gonna kinda walk through those. Uh, first, in the growing and prosperous area, uh, related to the expansion of the U G B for commercial and industrial lands. Uh, we have our submission ready to go to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and we anticipate this process to be complete by the end of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the next one, evaluate retail business mix and pursue areas of need. There's really nothing new. We just, that one's kind of a continuous effort. We're always looking for ways that we can, uh, encourage retail, uh, development. Next one, complete the transportation system plan. Uh, we have consultants under contract. We have an advisory committee selected, and we're, we're underway, uh, with that process. Uh, the prioritized sidewalk installation, supporting student pedestrian travel, that's incorporated into our upcoming work plans as we look uh, through this budget year. There's funds have been allocated as we, um, have done each year. Uh, let's see, evaluate personal transportation options. Uh, the taxi company contract was, uh, adjusted and awarded, and we also adjusted our city ordinance to allow ride-sharing companies to operate within the city, so uh, we feel like that really has, uh, kind of addressed that item. Uh, implement the grant for Safe Streets for All. Um, we have, uh, put an application in to fund all of the priorities listed in our Safe Streets for All Plan. Um, and so we're, we're just waiting as they evaluate those applications, and we'll, um, know probably later in the fall whether we're awarded those funds. Next, um, attract market rate rental housing developments to increase middle housing inventory. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about that tonight. Um, I don't, and so I think we're really moving forward with that. Then, uh, study incentive options, and this, again, we talked about that and have, um, implemented one, uh, this evening. Uh, continue to fund infrastructure improvements to support new housing and enhance livability. We're always looking for those infrastructure projects and partnerships, uh, with all the developments that go on and, and trying to, uh, kinda make our dollars go as far as we can, and so that's kind of an ongoing, ongoing process. The next one, uh, is in safe and healthy, uh, under that, um, category. Uh, the feasibility analysis on the Hermiston Aquatic and Wellness Center, um, and determine next steps. We're in the process. Uh, anticipate in the fall, we'll be coming to the council with some more discussion about that from our committee. Task force, uh, completing a streetlight study that's underway. Uh, evaluating and address security of parks and trails, that's also underway. And then evaluate and possibly implement red light photo enforcement along Highway three ninety-five. We've completed our traffic study, and we are drafting a final application to ODOT for that. Um, they're the final determination of whether we can do that on three ninety-five or not, and so we're hopeful that they will uh, decide to allow us that option. Then, um, the next, conduct public engagement for, to identify use scenarios. Evaluate all options and finalize plan for the Carnegie Building. So we have the Civic Leadership Academy presented, um, um, some information related to how they, some things that they would include in a public engagement process related to the Carnegie, and also the great news, uh, we were awarded a million dollars, um, through the state budget process uh, that can be used towards, um, towards that project. So we're pretty excited about, that we have a little bit of money to get started. Probably not enough to finish, but enough to get started, so. Uh, complete public library renovation, that's under construction. We, uh, tentatively are looking at reopening fall of this year. Finalize water allocation for Eotech. Uh, we really have some good possibilities underway for some permanent irrigation water up there. Uh, hope to come back, uh, in front of the council in the near future with kind of a more, just a formalized, um, solution to that, but we have some good, good, uh, possibilities. Um, reinitiate broadband infrastructure discussion. We've been working on an R F P in conjunction with the City of Umatilla, um, just to come back with some costs that we can bring to the council, see whether we wanna move forward with that process or not, and so that's, that's going well. Uh, complete our public safety center renovation. It's under construction. Uh, we're looking at reopening in winter of twenty-twenty-six. And let's see, evaluate the use of community T R T and Harkenrider contribution. We had that, uh, initial discussion related to that with our, uh, most recent budget process. Developing a five-year financial plan to support sustainable staffing, that's under, uh, in process. And reevaluate, or evaluate new digital records management and retention. Uh, we intend to initiate that evaluation at the, in the fall of twenty-twenty-five. Then explore expansion of engagement, education, engagement of education partners to develop and implement youth engagement plan to increase understanding of and involvement with the city. Uh, we have plans in place to enhance the program that we're doing with the Youth Advisory Committee, and also exploring other, uh, city-related items in some of the high school civics curriculum. Uh, we'll be working on that with, uh, Mr. Davis from the high school. Then developing a communication and engagement plan identifying goals and metrics. We're, uh, just starting to put together an R F P so we can, um, see what that uh, process would, would cost and, and entail. And conducting a charter review, we started that tonight. And then, uh, reexamine council committees, boards and activities, or boards and advisory groups. Uh, that is completed, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Smith. Uh, this report was information-only, so we don't need to take an action tonight, but I'll entertain any council questions on that report. Council Roberts.
One question, just because I can't remember for certain. On the public safety center renovation, it says winter of twenty-six. Is that January and February twenty-six, or like November, December twenty-six?
January, February is what we're hoping for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and I'll just say, you know, spring doesn't officially start until, you know, March, right?
Anything else? Counselor, uh, Linton.
Okay, uh, number, item number twenty-one. Uh, says that, uh, there's some, I guess there's talk and different things going on to raise money or something for the, um, indoor swimming pool.
So, uh, I established a task force of community partners, and there's a couple of city councilors on that, and we're talking about whether, basically, yeah, are there enough partners to make that project a reality? And so we're coming to the end of some of that discussion, and I hope to, in the fall, come back with a report to the council related to that.
Okay.
I believe the purpose of that task force was a feasibility task force.
Right, can we, and, and feasibility both from a construction, can we generate enough money to build it? And can we generate enough money to operate it?
Thank you. Do you have any more, Council Linton?
I just have one other question. Um, with the pool that we already have here, has any, has anyone looked into building just a cover over it and how much that would cost?
We, we have evaluated that option. It's not really feasible to build just a cover, um, because, um, I mean, you really, the, the whole building, you know, where the, where the offices and, and the restrooms and the locker rooms, those aren't insulated either, so you have to really build a, a true roof, and, and so we haven't looked at that as an option, but we have looked at the, we're looking at the possibility of reusing part of that as part of a potential future aquatic center.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? Do you have one, Council Brown? No, okay. All right. Then, would we entertain public comment on this report? If any, if, if either of you wanna speak up about any of this, go ahead. All right, perfect. Any other council questions or comments before we move on? All right, perfect. Onto committee reports. Um, all, T R T was the last one I was on, and you guys just approved that, so, um, I'm all good. Any other committee reports? Council Duran.
Well, as the Hispanic Advisor Committee, we have not met, but, um, offline, some members have met to plan out the, um, Hispanic Heritage Month, which is, or the celebration, that whole entire month. But, um, just so that you know, uh, tentatively, uh, the date of October fifth has been set aside. Um, the committee is still, um, deciding whether, which location it's going to be held at, whether it's the community center, whether it's at here, um, outside of City Hall, or if it's gonna be at E O Tech. But tentatively is scheduled for October fifth from, um, three to seven, correct, Mr. Kelso? Um, so, in case you guys wanna put that on your calendar, you're more than welcome to do that. Um, one of the things that has been happening with the, um, Parks and Rec is that I wanna say for the last three meetings, we've not had a quorum. So, um, this very last meeting, um, I, I had mentioned that I was gonna arrive late at five forty-five. We meet at five thirty. And, uh, I, I think the meeting actually was canceled because not enough members were present. So it's a growing concern that we're not able to move forward with some of the decisions we have to make because we're simply not getting the people there to the meeting. I just wanted to let you know that. I don't know if the, any other committees are seeing that, but I don't know how we can remedy that. Um, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that's been a challenge for this particular committee.
Um, one thing I would maybe suggest is to have your chair review if there's a number of absences that have been repeated, and perhaps, I think there's a guideline that allows for after a certain amount suggesting removal of that person and then allowing it, a replacement.
So perhaps, Mr. City Manager, um, since Mr., uh, Art says not here, maybe passing on that bit of information so that he can have that conversation with, um, the chairman. I think that would help us a lot. If you don't mind, thank you.
Any other committee reports? All right, uh, Council President report. Uh, hey, hey, we all had a happy Fourth of July. Um, I, I think I attended the first opportunity. I've been to Stanfield for their parade. I haven't done that since I moved here, so I was able to do that. Was able to watch the fireworks from the Butte, and I extremely enjoyed those. A lot of them, felt like a lot of them went off right away, and then, um, also at the end, so I really enjoyed that, um, from a new angle this year. Um, I'll go ahead and throw out events and things like that. Oh, I also attended, uh, recently the Chambers Summer Mixer, uh, which was very well-attended. Uh, there were opportunities to talk about basically all the things that everybody likes about Hermiston there, and there's not a lot of opportunities in a public forum to be able to do that, so I wanna say thank you to the Chamber for throwing that event. Um, and the next thing kinda really coming up is we've got the fair coming up, is less than a month away, the Fair Parade on the second. Make sure you've, uh, communicated to Lily, um, your interest and your R S V P for how many people you'll be bringing on, as well as some other fair-related emails that you've also received into that, so make sure to respond to that. Any count, other council reports? Go ahead.
Uh, late last month, got to attend the city chats, the final city chats, done a cup of yo with, uh, Councilor Duran and Councilor Hayward and, uh, City Manager Smith. Um, was not as well-attended as I was, I was kinda hoping, but the people that were there, uh, were engaged, and, uh, uh, it was just a good time to interact with the public, and so I'm hoping that, uh, we can, we can continue doing that, so.
Thank you, Council Roberts. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just wanna let the council know, I, uh, won't be present the next council meeting. I'll be out of the country with my family, so, uh, I will be present in the August one and hope to catch you guys at the parade.
I'll miss the August one, so. Anybody else? Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll be trying to convince Councilor Barone to take me with him, but, um, failing that, I will be here at the next meeting. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the city's efforts in, uh, putting on the fireworks show at the Butte. I watched from, I think, Fourth, uh, Fourth Street where it kinda goes up on the hill. I pulled off and. I pulled off and it was a new angle for me, but it was, it was an awesome show. I had a great time. And I turned on K O H U thirteen sixty A M and.
You actually turned on ninety-three point seven, but thank you.
I did not, it was thirteen.
Was, they did on the A M too? Okay, wow. They only told me the F M, okay. I gotta, I have to talk with my program director.
Yeah, no, they did it on A M. It was great and uh, I loved it, so I want to thank K O H U and uh, also the city for for putting that on. It was a great show.
It'll be in stereo next time if you listen to the F M.
I'm an old timer.
But uh, I think, Counselor Duran, you.
Since uh, Counselor Roberts brought up the uh, city chat, um, one of the. Comments that we heard, since you also mentioned the Fourth of July and the fireworks. Was um, the consideration for instead of having fireworks. If um, the city would look into the feasibility of having like a drone kind of a show. Um, being sensitive to how dogs react to fireworks and how veterans also. Uh, you know, may be sensitive to the loud noises. Um, that was something that was brought up as a comment, like. Is that something that the city could could explore? So I thought I would mention it since it it reminded me since, since you made that comment, but. Um, yeah, I really enjoy the conversations that we had with the residents that showed up and they had some concerns. I appreciated the fact that um, City Manager was there to take notes and take it a step further. Um, and looking into their concerns and also offering some suggestions as to what they can do. To also address some of the concerns that they had about um, the loud noises that cars are making nowadays. With the, you know, loud booms that as they're traveling.
Tight subwoofers and things, yeah.
Yeah, so um, thank you for your time also and and for the other council members that were there. Hey, I enjoyed our our city chat.
Counselor Duran, I want to encourage you that perhaps if you have a quorum in your Parks and Rec Committee meeting to uh, bring up. The uh, at least the option for a drone show, whether that be Fourth of July or not. I think that's probably something that should be represented by that committee and then made a recommendation to council if that action was going to be taken. So I'd encourage you to bring that up. I think Counselor Linton, you had also something?
Uh, yes, um, I'm hoping that the city chats continue. I have a group of people over here that I've talked to you about before that wants uh, someone to come over and sit and talk with them. So I'm hoping that that uh, continues. And uh, I think it's a good thing to do for people to be able to come that can't come to the meeting. But we'll go to those um, city chats. And I was out of the country, so I missed all the fireworks. I'm not sad about it.
And I just wanted to let the council know, I I plan to bring back a report on all of the city chats. And just kind of talk about it and then talk about what we might do in the coming fiscal year, so.
Thank you very much. I think that's everybody on the council. Alright, City Manager Smith, your report. Alright, perfect. Well, I didn't quite beat a half hour, but um, it's before nine o'clock. I'll call this adjourned.